Good morning and thank you for joining us today on our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors for April 7. And before we get started, Dr. Koons has a couple announcements. And also, we'd like to have a roll call of those people that are on the phone. And if you are from the public, please identify that. Thank you, Dr. Koons.
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair asked me to speak on two different subjects. First, people on the phone, can they hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. One, because we are conducting this by teleconference and some board members may not participate, what we'll be doing is all of our motions and voting will be by roll call so we can get the actual count. And the second issue is if someone recuses, if one of our board members that is not present recuses, what we'll ask them to do is mute their phone and then we will proceed because they do have the right to listen, we just, they just do not have the right to participate. So what we'll do is we'll have them mute their phone and then when the item is over, they'll come back and join us. So thank you.
Thank you. So a roll call, Supervisor Finley?
Here.
Supervisor Brown? All others, please identify themselves on the phone.
Shelly Elton, Agent Rinder. Barbara Long, County Attorney. Sally Morris, Attorney. Shadow Life, Detective Resettis.
In fact, here.
This is Marcy.
Liz Hamilton, something's been a threat to this office in emergency, there is.
Mike Gilchrist, Attorney General, County Attorney.
Michael Petroni, Attorney General, County Attorney.
Anybody for public comment?
Is there anybody from the public? Okay. So moving on, we will have a pledge of allegiance, Mr. Groves, Supervisor Finley.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Did we just have someone join us?
I think, oops. It's a break down, it's almost, but here's one.
Ed, oh yeah?
Okay, Ed, thank you, Ed. So if we hear an interruption on the phone, we'll go ahead and call out to ask that person if there is someone speaking at the time, we'll wait till they're concluded. Presentations, Clerk of the Board, item 1.1, receive an update from Interim Director of Health and Human Services, Liz Hamilton, and County Administrative Officer Richard Koons regarding the coronavirus, COVID-19, and Trinity County. Who is going to lead this?
Liz can lead off if you'd like.
Thank you, Liz.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I wanted to give just a brief update and then of course pass it to Marcy Cudwell for submitting information. But I wanted to let the board know, if you had not noticed, we are working every day to improve this trinitycounty.org website with current information. And so you will notice if you log on, part of the design of the online format is to make it user-friendly on cellphones. And so you will be able to see a daily tracker that shows that you're celling the public, pending test results, and the information there. And so I hope that you find that helpful. We're also continuing to build up our local resources and link everyone appropriately to services. And then to let the board know that we've also done a great deal of outreach to our rural communities within our county, making connections with the store owners and providing them direct information so that for folks that maybe do not have internet in the outland areas, they can receive updates through kind of the primary store in that community. And so of course, we're always open to feedback and suggestions for improving communication. You know, it's a daily, it's a daily process. Information is passing very quickly, as you know, and so we're doing our best to stay on top of it or ahead of it where we can. So with that, I will talk to Marcy.
Good morning, Madam Chair, all supervisors, thank you very much for the opportunity to update you. So as of last night, we had 58 total tests done, 58 negative and pending. Moving forward, we recently put out a press release related to base coverings and really what those are designed to do and not to do. And we put some resources out for our population, our communities on our website. I was on a call recently with CDTH and they are creating a testing task force. As you may know, Governor Newsom implemented that, and they will be looking at a public-private partnership to address the issues of testing. I'll know more about that in the days to come, and I will keep you abreast of that. As testing has become much of our focus these days, we want to ensure testing is appropriate and respected on individuals that are prioritized while at the same time understanding that our hospital and clinic are at a disadvantage in that getting those testing supplies can be challenging. So I just wanted you all to know that we are working with them, looking at a variety of issues moving forward, including how they're prioritizing and how we can ensure that we're testing not just to identify those that are the sickest to be hospitalized, but also those potentially that have it and are ill but may not be, need to be hospitalized. The other update from CDTH is the discussion around regional alternate care sites. And essentially what that is, is that is part of search planning for the state. So they will be looking at how local healthcare facilities will transfer patients to the regional alternate care sites and what that protocol is and what that criteria is. They also put out an all facilities letter around skilled nursing facilities and the transfer of patients in and out skilled nursing facilities. And the role that the local public health jurisdiction plays in that in ensuring that the facilities receiving COVID patients, patients or potentially positive COVID patients in their skilled nursing facilities are, have the appropriate mechanisms in place to ensure appropriate inspection control. And so the Health Department will look at that and sign off on those. That's really all I have at this point. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Finley, do you have any questions over the phone?
No questions, just a comment, you might also look at using the local post offices along with community virtue stores.
Supervisor Brown?
Supervisor Brown, we welcome you, and do you have any questions? I would remind the phone users, we thank you for using the mute, but when you go to talk, please unmute. I do have a couple of questions, Marcy, thank you. On the PPE, the personal protection equipment, for our firefighters, first responders, there has been a push to start manufacturing that in the country. Do you anticipate when we might be able to stock those for our potential fire season?
Thank you, Madam Chair, that's a very good question, and I do not have an answer for you on that at this time, but I can certainly get that and get back to you.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate all your hard work, thank you. Did Dr. Koons or Mr. Presley?
I'm going to ask Kristy to give an update too, she's here.
Kristy Anderson is going to update us now.
Good morning. So we've been working really closely with businesses in particular about some of the COVID-19 restrictions and.
I need the speaker. Sorry about that, we're having equipment adjustments, thank you for your patience.
I'm a loud speaker. So we've struggled a little bit more this last week with businesses. We've struggled a little bit more with businesses, becoming a little more relaxed, and we had to let a couple of bars know that they still needed to really close. Couple of other small businesses around the county, and so, you know, we just are really trying to get out there and let them know that this is not the time to relax those restrictions. And that's pretty much all I have for this portion.
Thank you. I think we have a question from Supervisor Morris.
I don't know if she's directed it. Kristy, you're not to some general questions, but I can. Should I start there? I know we have this feedback. Just back up a little bit. So, and this goes for the whole group, I'm still getting kind of comments about potential visitors not kind of aware of our 14-day stay-at-home order and perhaps, I think we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, perhaps we could still do those sandwich boards at the grocery stores, you know, throughout the county. I think, you know, Hayfork, Weaverville, maybe North County and something in South County, maybe at the Burger Farm. Just in some very general statements, not the whole, I mean, the order could be there, but just some very basic as people are walking by, they can kind of understand what's going on and maybe some information dropped off those restaurants who offer takeout. Because I'm still hearing folks coming up, I know, I've been reading, you can certainly go fishing with a person in your household, but in a group fishing, that's really discouraged, and I think there's confusion over that aspect of recreation. I understand the fishing game commissions might postpone fishing season opening, which I understand is any day now, but they may push it toward late April. So just those kind of observations that I've been hearing and watching, so. And then on a different note, CAO Koons, I know next, perhaps next item, next week I should say, you were going to kind of bring us back some information on CDVG, the economic slice of that potential pie. I understand the CARE Act that was passed also has money for CDVG, so it's kind of like an update on what that really means and how it applies. So I think that's all I have.
Supervisor Groves?
What should I answer?
So we have noticed certain communities are busier than ever, and we're doing a lot of things about that. So I do think, you know, more outreach is necessary in those areas.
I do think those sandwich boards, you don't need that many, and the J.C. store perhaps, they're helpful on fire, and I think if people are shopping, they can see what the county's up to. Sorry, Keith.
So what about the resorts? Have you contacted all the resorts?
Yes, I have.
And complaint?
We've seen substantial complaints, I can't speak for every facility, but so far it's all complaint-driven for the response.
So there is some confusion out there, and I'm not sure, we have, of course, my district has a lot of people that come and go. We have people that are living in, on the coast and then come to their place for the weekends, but they seem to be staying in their place. Is that allowed under our current?
Under the current health order, it is allowed for you to go to your second home and quarantine for 14 days.
And so as long as you're staying there, you can come and go as you please? I mean, back?
Yes.
Across county lines? Okay. All right, that's, that's what I had, thank you. And I appreciate your help, and I'm fielding a lot of phone calls from people saying things like, "There's a stranger in town," which I get, so thank you for your help on these issues.
Supervisor Norris has a call.
Yeah, I do, thank you. A follow-up on Supervisor Groves' question, my understanding is, stay-at-home order from the state was really stay at home, not really leave your home to go to another place. How does that, am I wrong, was there a conflict with, really, they shouldn't be leaving their home if they live in Sacramento, Rockland, Ashland?
That's a really good point, but I haven't heard that already yet. So I'll discuss those with the crew.
Okay, and maybe I'm confused between the state order and our local order, but I don't know, like, some clarification on that.
And how that translates.
I know the governor said, "Don't vacation across county lines," but if you have a second line, I don't know that.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue we're having, is second residents. So they pay their property taxes, they own the property, and we can't enforce them not coming to their second home, but we can enforce them quarantining. So that's where we're, we're looking at that side. They're welcome to come, stay in their second home, but please stay home, because you can get cited for not staying at home.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Koons. Thank you. Kristy, is there any other follow-up from the supervisors on the phone? Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Doctor Koons?
Do you want to just kind of emphasize or just clarify the new order on the transit system? What, how is that?
Yes, thanks for asking that. Referring to our transit system that runs from Shasta County over to Humboldt County, we have, at this time suspended for 30 days, we don't go from county to county. And we are working on, working with Director Tippit to actually do more of a dial the ride for in-county. So that way we can screen, as people call in, they need to go somewhere, we can kind of screen as to, are they going to their family's house to visit, or are they going to the pharmacy? Because we're doing everything we can to protect our transit drivers and the community. So at this point, I believe Rick has instituted a dial the ride system, and we have suspended with the, with the agreement from our health officer, that he would do best to suspend our travel to and from Humboldt and Shasta County, because as we know, they're becoming hotspots now. We have, I think we have 49 or 50 in Humboldt, and Shasta has reached 20, as has this morning. So we're doing what we can to keep our number at zero.
And I want to invite you to speak to the fact that that can be located at the county website, at the DOT. Anybody that's listening or watching and did not understand what we're doing, they can go there.
Yes.
And their phone number is?
I will confirm all that, I don't have the phone number, okay, but I'll confirm that that's on there before the meeting's over.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, Rick's on.
Right there.
Hi, Rick, thanks for joining in. I didn't have you down, so I appreciate you calling in and speaking to this.
All right, I'll, I'll look up the phone number here in a second, but the dial the ride is probably still a week out, and it tends to be running the system when there is Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, so it's only ten counties. That is, we go to the operator for Sawyer and Lewiston and Hayfork right now, but we are not making such a real deal with little three. And here we'll get dialing, and if you're ready to.
Rick, you're cutting out a little bit.
I believe what he said was, we're, we're processing the dialer rights, hoping to have that instituted by the end of this week or the beginning of next week, and they're going to, uh, Lewiston, Sawyer, we'll get.
Hayfork.
Hayfork, I don't know if they're still doing it now, two days a week.
Rick, have you suspended, go ahead.
And Lewiston.
And Lewiston. Have you suspended the free days?
No, it's still three days right now, Sunday, Wednesday, and Friday.
I'm sorry, you didn't hear me correctly, the free, F-R-E-E, the no-cost dates, have we eliminated that? Thank you.
Yes, yes, we had to eliminate that. We've had, there have been a lot of problems with transit operators throughout the state on the free days, and they had come back to implementing a standard fare. So we are, we're going to continue with that for the time being.
Okay.
That's Polly.
Is that Polly? Hello?
This is Liz Hamilton, I wanted to just let the board know that on the Trinity County website, on the left-hand side, there's an icon that says "Local Resources." If you click that, you will automatically be taken to Department of Transportation's link, which has the ride information there. And I also want to point out that MedPal and partnerships, for those that qualify, they do offer transportation to medical services, and that information is located there as well.
Perfect. Thank you, Liz.
I have a different follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Can you clarify the real estate order as well for the public?
I will do my best, and I have to refer to Liz. Though the governor has declared real estate in a central function, our health officer has put out an order that in Trinity County, it is not a central function, and we're not allowing open houses and real estate to go on as far as showing houses and that type of stuff. We are not suspending the current, and I don't know how many are in, I heard the number up to 60, escrows we have right now, we're allowing those to go in and complete, because most of those should have been done, should have already done inspections and all the legwork and groundwork, so they're now waiting for other riders, so those will continue. But as far as any type of appraisals, inspections, and home showings, we've suspended those in Trinity County for 30 days.
Any follow-up? No. I do, thank you for their time. Any additional comments by anyone on the phone? Okay, we're going to bring it back to the board and go into our consent.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I wasn't, I wasn't fast enough on the beep button there, sorry about that. I do have the phone number, the for Trinity Transit, it is 623-5438, and that's the line direct to Transit. If you cannot read Transit, then you can call the general phone number, which is 623-1365, and we'll direct you to Transit.
Thank you, Rick. Any other additional comments before we move on to consent?
I do, I, we've been putting out phone numbers in for the Health Department or OES that, and here, you know, it sounds great, but I do get complaints from people that call and call and call and never get any answer for their questions. And does that mean they called once and just got frustrated, or does that mean they called 10 times? I don't know. But, so, I know everybody's busy, but if we're going to hand out these phone numbers, we need to come up with some sort of solutions if people get callbacks or answers or questions.
Marcy, thank you Supervisor Groves for that. One of the things that I can tell you for the public health side, we set up a dedicated line after talking with our sheriff. Dispatch was getting a number of calls because our primary public health line was busy a lot of the times, which is understandable with people reaching out for other services that aren't just related to COVID. So we dedicated a public health line that where we're asking people to leave a message, and we'll check that line twice a day and return those calls within 24 hours.
Marcy, didn't you have some stats that you reported out on, on that specifically, on our response recently?
I'm sorry, Sheriff Minn, I didn't hear the question?
I believe you had some recent stats on our response to calls in a, in a recent report you did, would you happen to remember those?
I believe that we're compiling those through our OES.
Okay.
We are tracking those calls, we have developed a spreadsheet to ensure that we don't miss calls and to document the disposition of those calls, and we will provide that information to you moving forward.
Thank you. Any additional? Okay.
This is Ed from OES, I'd just like to lay in on that.
Please.
Okay. We have received over 80 calls and have responded to those here at OES. This has been a large part of the job right now, with phone numbers, with the phone number being my main line here, 1116. If people call, they need to be sure that they leave a message, because I don't have caller ID, so if I don't have a message or a returned phone number, I don't really know how to get back in touch with those folks. So that would be something I would definitely want to express, so that people know to leave a message.
That's an excellent point. Our antique lines do not have caller ID, so if anyone from the public is calling, be sure to leave your name and your full phone number. We have a lot of people with cellphones now, and they do not all have the 530 prefix, so thank you, Ed, that was a very important and valid point, I appreciate that.
Does, does our message say that we'll get back to you in 24 hours and please leave a number, Ed?
Well, Marcy Cudwell here, Supervisor Groves, yes, we have a detailed message on that, that dedicated line. Now, that's strictly for public health issues related to COVID. We're asking people if it's an emergency to dial line number one, we're informing them that if it's, if it's related to symptoms or questions about whether, if they're ill, that they hang up and call their healthcare provider. We still have after-hours dispatch for urgent public health calls, or if it's a healthcare provider, we give instructions to the healthcare provider, how to do it, we'll do best through a different line. And then it starts the public on what that phone is for, and that we will check that twice a day and get back to them within 24 hours.
Thank you, Marcy.
This is a little comment from Sedley.
Yes, sir.
Southern Trinity, I want to thank Ed and Liz for reaching out to Southern Trinity, they've gotten back to me, and they're very appreciative of all the information you could have in service. Thank you again.
Thank you, Supervisor Finley. I have one question, Supervisor Finley just dropped my memory. This is a totally different question, Sup, I was going to call you Supervisor Koons, CAO Koons. I know there's various funding sources coming down, and have we reached out to our life support partners as to equipment that they may need, whatever that might be, or are they reaching out to us?
Yeah, they're actually part, I was going to be in my, some of my presentation for the, when we had Department Head, but we have a multi-county agency coordination meeting every Thursday, and they're, they're part of that, so we're in communication with them, we have, and we've had, it's our second one this week, but last week, we had 100% participation, so I was really excited that everybody's taking this seriously. But some of the agencies are on there, Public Health, Cal Fire, CHP, County Administration, Environmental Health, the Hospital, Human Resource Network, Officer Services, Gromation, Sheriff, Social Services, Trinity County Offices of Education, Trinity Life Support, and the Forest Service. And we had 100% participation last week and got some really good information, and everybody's on the same page, and we're doing that on a weekly basis. So yes, we are communicating with all of our partners all over the county, and people are taking this serious and reaching out to us when they need something, and also telling us where the resources are if we don't have it.
Great, thank you.
This is Marcy, and if I could just add one thing to this, thank you, Richard, one of the things that helps, first, passing for our healthcare system and our partners, and we purchased, they're called pop-up facilities, but they're really a four-room facility tent that can be taken down and put up with this. facility tent that can be taken down and put up within, in about 20 minutes by, with three people. As the state steps up search planning for all hospitals in the state and developing processes for that search, such as the regional alternate care site that I mentioned briefly, we're looking to, okay, how can we utilize the unit in a way that makes sense right now? So perhaps using those as triage units for our clinics in our hospitals. We talked with Sheriff Jackson, looking at if she's getting one of those to the jail and what that would look like as an isolation or a triage unit. So I just wanted to share that, because I didn't share that earlier. So, thank you.
Okay, once again, we're going to attempt to go into consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board individually and under these circumstances. A member of the board, staff, or public may request an item be pulled and considered separately. So Supervisor Brown, would you like to pull anything out of the consent? Supervisor Finley?
Thank you.
Thank you for responding. Supervisor Finley? Supervisor Groves?
Item.
Yes or no? I finally found my button.
Thank you.
2.15.
Supervisor Morris?
I was going to, but no, I think I answered my question.
Okay, thank you. So bringing it back to the board, there's no public comment and no one on the phone. So Staff, do you have anything to pull?
Yes, this is Shelley Nelson, HR Director. I'd like to pull 2.13 and 2.14.
Thank you, Shelley. With that, move to approve the remainder. Thank you. Supervisor Morris?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Groves. Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
Okay.
Human Resources, item 2.12, approve the allocation of positions listening effective of... Oh, sorry, you are correct. I'm sorry, Shelley, I wrote your name in two places. Item 2.13, ratify the county administrative officer's signature on the respiratory protection plan policy, policy number 2020-01, which implements a policy for designated employees who are or may be required to wear respirators. Unknown fiscal impact. Shelley?
Yes, thank you. I pulled this item, I, in reviewing it, had noticed that on page 14, which is a exhibit, it is the employee medical history questionnaire, which an employee would fill out and turn in to a medical provider to review prior to approving them to be fit tested. At the bottom of the final page of that questionnaire, there is a line for a signature for a supervisor to sign a signature. I'm sorry, supervisors should not be reviewing medical questionnaires that employees are filling out. So I just wanted to remove the signature supervisor line from that page.
Okay, so you want us to amend it before we pass the motion to accept it?
That would be correct.
Thank you. Any public comment? Bringing it back to the board, looking for a motion.
So moved with the amended language.
Second.
Thank you.
Supervisor Groves, I think that mute button slows everything down.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
Moving on to item 2.14, ratify the county administrative officer's signature on the interim telecommuting policy, policy number 2020-02, which implements a temporary telecommuting policy due to the current COVID-19 coronavirus outbreak. No fiscal impact. Ms. Shelley?
Thank you, yes. So on this particular policy, I did want to ask for amendment as well, and then I noted a couple typos. So on page two, under section four, emergency telecommuting, item B, it originally read "All technology used by the employee will be provided by the county," asking to add comma, except as approved by IT, the department head, and county administrative officer. And then on the last page, which is exhibit A, the fourth bullet down, it says, "Do not use your own equipment without approval of your IT department," ensuring that the device is encrypted, device is dispelled, and you need to correct that with a C. And the pagination didn't follow. So at the bottom of page four of three, it should be page four of four.
Okay, once again, we're just looking to adjust spelling and punctuation and cleaning it up. And I appreciate you making these corrections ahead of time. Way to go. No public comment, bringing it back to the board.
I move to approve with the amended language.
Second is Sudley.
Supervisor Finley?
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
Probation, item 2.15, approve amendment number two to the memorandum of understanding with the Trinity County Superior Court, which transfers the responsibility of delinquent collections from the county to the courts effective July 1, 2020, and authorize the county administrative officer to sign the amendment. Unknown cost to the general fund due to the overhead and indirect costs being transferred to the probation and juvenile hall budgets. These potential increases will hopefully be offset by other savings within the departments. Supervisor Groves?
So as I recall this, and Supervisor Morris probably knows more about it, we had a fairly well-functioning collections when the county was in the courtroom doing the collections, and then the court took that over, and then we continued to look for the late pays through probation, which plummeted our income into the county. So unless I'm misunderstanding, the court's taking that back, will that not just lower our return money even farther? I don't know if I made that question clear.
Yeah, I'm hoping that Tim was on the line.
Yes, I'm on the line. Good morning. I didn't hear the question, though. Did you repeat that question?
So I...
I have a hard time hearing.
Okay, so when the county did the collections in the court, and then probation, you know, went after the late fees, we did pretty well, and then the court took over the initial getting the money, which then it sort of collapsed. And then you did a good job of going out and getting delinquent payments. Turning this over to courts, won't that even lower our amount of income in?
Well, actually, it should benefit not only the courts and the county in terms of meeting MLE, and also being able to use both programs to play one off another to overall, like, more revenue. It's complicated, I'll try to give the short version of that. So this, the delinquent collections department has a budget of $252,000 and 12 cents. The revenue is $252,000 and 12 cents. It's revenue control. You can only recover the cost of the fulfilling delinquent collection, there's no other profit revenue generated beyond that. When you have both the delinquent collections and fourth with underfunded through, some of the functions of fourth with can also be done by decent delinquent staff in addition to overhead costs for running the department. That can also include case management systems for the database that are used, which is essentially a win-win to be able to have both underfunded through. When we went to a hybridated system back in 2015, yes, we were able to continue to generate a, revenue to cover our expenses for delinquent collections. But in the, in subsequent years, different legislation, H103, ability to, drivers like toll enforcement upon payers' pay, SB 190, elimination of people's fees. There was also people versus delinquents facility to pay determinations. Also, SB 144, which we did with two-year bill, which essentially is, like, further eliminate, eliminate our ability to collect on something like that. It started ramping down year after year, our ability to be able to go after funds. So essentially, what we did was, we put a system in place to go after older delinquent accounts, including even accounts that had discharge and accountability, which legally we can still collect on, but it was written off the book. We, I still went after a lot of loading through, and we've still got more headwinds that are helping us, so it's getting more and more difficult to be able to make revenue for the department. We can use any of the staffing or resources with this department to help out on the fourth with side. This is the reason why most counties and states have a comprehensive program under this one group. In terms of the benefits of both the courts and county, as I said, a lot of expenses can be transferred over into the fourth with side of the house. We've chosen this time to pull the trigger on this, because we run staffing problems over here in probation. We're right now down to just 0.5 SBs covering this process. We'll be able to make our revenue projections to be able to cover expenses, but nothing more than that. So we're just going to barely be able to live along. It's getting more and more difficult to perform this process. I've got a lot of other questions for here that I've got written out that I'd be more than happy to address if you could hit with any more.
So to put on your, this is Supervisor Groves again, to put on your crystal ball, just from the headwinds, in the future, there'll be a lot less funds from these sources, it sounds like?
Absolutely. I feel that if SB 144 is passed for the delinquents, delinquents in Trinity County, which I truly believe that's going to happen, that's our first kind of opinion, I think would probably be going to, possibly in the next physical year, drop below our revenue projections to be able to cover expenses. And it's kind of a downward spiral, because once you cut back on staffing to be able to keep revenue, and of course, you're unable to generate that revenue. If you go down to just one employee, then I have no relief factor, if that employee is out, and he's technically, I lose the ability to be able to keep, 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 keep alive.
Okay, so...
We're kind of right on that bubble right now.
So I'm going to come up with a silly analogy. So you're jumping off a sinking ship?
Well, it wouldn't be a sinking ship for the courts, because they would be both going to collections and fourth with under the same roof.
Okay.
And that's the only way right now to be able to make comprehensive collections for kind of a hybridated system that just doesn't work anymore.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Supervisor Morris?
Thanks. This is Supervisor Morris. Thank you, Tim, for that explanation. We did see those numbers change over the last few years. And have the fourth with collections kept pace over the years? There was a decrease. Have they picked back up and stayed?
Yes, the courts have put a lot of additional best practices in place. Judicial counsel has a lot of belief in the courts right now in Trinity County to be able to perform this function. I think that with additional staffing, and I, my understanding is that they are going to hire possibly one to one and a half staff to perform this function. I think they're going to be able to do it and make money and meet best practice standards. The benefit to the courts in Trinity County here is that with the courts being able to use and recover costs on the delinquent side to deep up and generate more revenue on the fourth with side than anything over the maintenance of Evers or MLE, which I believe a couple years back was around $105,000, if I'm not mistaken. But anything beyond that, my understanding is that there is a 50/50 split between the county and the courts. So essentially, we can help the courts be able to meet MLE and generate any profits beyond that amount, and we can also assure that the counties are going to be in a position where we're not able to beat revenue projections, and we're coming in short in the near. And that's the reason why I think this is a win. It's a win for the courts, no doubt about it, but it's also a win for the county, is because we're able to keep from having this liability of not having fourth with under the same roof and playing this kind of guessing game, whether we're going to be able to have enough staff to perform this function, and what's going to happen with future legislation that may really further damage.
All right, thank you so much. Supervisor Brown, do you have any additional questions? Supervisor Finley?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. There's no public here. Any public on the phone? Bringing it back to the board.
I'll move to approve 2.15 as presented.
Second.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
Moving on to reports and announcements, reports from department heads. Would we like to start with Ms. Hunter? Thank you.
Good morning, Kim Hunter, Building and Planning Director. This morning, I'm pleased to introduce Lisa Lozier. She is our new deputy director of planning, and I'm also very excited to have her on board. She'll be focusing on the planning side of the department, obviously, and as I transition more over to just department oversight and management, and natural resources will be more my focus, and cannabis. So we're going to divide and conquer. That's the plan. So a little bit about Lisa, she comes to us from Shasta County, 16 years with Shasta County, many of those years as senior planner. Also during that time, she managed the permit counter. And her degree in planning is from Northern Arizona University, Flagstaff. She also spent three years as a planner in Holbrook, Arizona. So with that, I'll introduce Lisa and let her say a few words, any questions that you have for her.
So, good morning, everyone. Madam Chairman, board members, it's a pleasure to meet those that are here today, and I look forward to meeting the board members that cannot join us for our unusual circumstances that we're all encountering these days. I just want to let you know that I am very pleased to be working for Trinity County. You know, I've been through the area a number of times. You know, I've been through the area a number of times as I was living in Redding, and I really like it. It's a lovely community, and I'm very much looking forward to being part of the staff and helping with the planning. I do have quite a bit of experience, and I'm hoping to be able to use that experience to help the staff kind of work their way through some of the things that are currently problematic and make it a little bit better for everyone, including all of the citizens. So thank you. I'm super glad to be here.
Thank you from the board, and we welcome you and look forward to seeing you navigate to the turbulent waters that we seem to be having at the moment. And I'm sure Supervisor Finley and Supervisor Brown look forward to meeting you in person as well. Thank you very much. Welcome to Team Trinity.
Thank you.
Supervisor Morris has something to say.
I just wanted to welcome you as well, and we're very excited. Probably Kim's the most excited. Congratulations, Kim.
Thank you.
The world's going to open up a little bit more. So welcome.
Thank you very much.
Kristy sent you here. I'm going to go ahead and ask you if you have any additional things you want to report out.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear about the amended health order and any other questions that come up with that as well, and to really emphasize that we're really trying to restrict movement through the county. And we tightened up some language in there for hotels, motels, things like that as well. So any of those questions that come up or have stayed with you, please let me know. And we're really going to be working hard to, this week, really emphasize those closures and those problematic areas that we've had the following week or so, and reaching out to the public because they do have a responsibility as well. Thank you.
Department heads that are on the phone, would any of you have a report out?
Yeah, this is Bob, right? From this conversation, I'd like to report out that, you know, construction continues on. We do have folks that are coming up from our area, and there's a, we do have a COVID-19 response plan, and along with a daily health check, and also we're working in coordination with the public health officer and the environmental health officer. As a matter of fact, the environmental health officer will be out there doing inspection today. So we do continue on the deal. We're still hoping to head to base that we had to get to earlier. Progress looks good, and we have done some neat things in the last couple of weeks, including starting to get the second floor deck on. So things are moving forward out there.
Great update. Good.
As far as DOT, we do, as President C X, we formed a, I formed a weekly group that all the county DOT directors get together and coordinate DOT issues, dealing with COVID-19. So we are, we aren't always necessarily looking to public health, we all work together to keep up with the latest and greatest things that are going on. So that's my report.
Is that for California only, or is that a national group?
That's California only.
Thank you.
This is Shelley Nelson, HR Director.
Welcome, Shelley.
Thank you. So human resources, it's been working very diligently on approaching a lot of the work that we do, which really greatly involves a lot of face-to-face. The first example would be onboarding of new employees. We are still recruiting, conducting interviews. The departments now are working on and have been successfully conducting interviews telephonically or via teleconferencing through different methods. And then for onboarding new employees paperwork, we are taking advantage of electronic and telephonic means. As a result, though, we don't get to personally meet people. I did want to reach out and welcome Liz Lozier, and I do look forward to meeting her face-to-face sometime in the future, but we're glad to have you as well. And of course, the department is working to stay on top of all the new and ever-changing regulations, policies, and assisting departments with all their needs and questions. It's a difficult time we're working through, but I think we're all doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
Shelley, real quick, it's Bobby. Do you know the status of our V O S, are under certification, where Jennifer's at?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. The board supervisors went?
The status of our veteran office surfer, is she getting closer to her certification? Do you know?
I would need to defer to Liz Hamilton, the third director.
Okay. If she's still on the line, maybe she could just give us an update. I know that the veterans in the Hayport area are getting anxious.
Yeah, hi Bobby, this is Liz Hamilton.
Hi Liz.
If Shelley has completed with her report out, I can definitely hear her report out for Health and Human Services.
Shelley, are you done?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking about the Veterans Services Officer. Jennifer Dogg is our local Veterans Services Officer, and unfortunately, the third conference that she was to attend this spring, which would have provided her an opportunity to take her third final test for certification, and has been postponed. She has been working with Shasta County virtually for all of her training hours. And so Liz Dogg is available to connect on the telephone with our local veterans. There still is a referral process to Shasta County. They have been wonderful and supportive of serving our veteran population here. A lot of that is limited with certain standards, and I will report out to the board when her certification is completed here locally.
Thank you.
As to other business in social services, I wanted to assure the board that our adult protective services staff is continuing in their wonderful outreach to our elders and vulnerable adult populations. They make routine contacts, making sure that those also enrolled in our in-home supportive services program, which is a very large program here, connecting with those providers and recipients and making sure that their needs are met and mitigating any of those that can. And social services, we are close to the walk-in population unless it's an emergency. We are being very effective in our telephone interviews, connecting with customers, and ensuring that their needs are met. By no surprise, as we've seen trending across the state and the country, that there's an increase in telepress, formerly another food stamp application, folks are able to file online, and we screen those, and the state has reduced a lot of the necessary verifications to minimal so that those are processed very timely so that there's not a food delay. We don't want to see food insecurity grow in our community, so we're looking to advance with that. And then, of course, any concern that there is that abuse still happens and has the potential to increase during times of stress and crisis. So our social work staff and both child welfare and adult protective services are responding to those when those meet criteria. We have an amazing collaborative relationship with the sheriff's department, and those needs will not go unmet.
Very good. Thank you. No questions from the board present? Is there any questions from Supervisor Finley?
No.
Supervisor Brown?
Hello.
Well done, Liz. Thank you.
Tim Sachs and Sheriff here.
Welcome, Tim.
Um, Chair, Board members, just like to report out a few things. Number one, we continue to maintain strong partnership with all of the members of O E S and Public Health.
Can you speak up just, excuse me?
There's a health emergency. Our three cadets that we had in the Post Academy, as you all know with all the colleges, we suspended our three wonderful cadets who are back here working in the sheriff's office now. We don't know whether or not they're actually going to be going back to the academy anytime soon. So we have them working here back in our jail, and we actually have them do some work with our control deputies, continuing their education, although informally. We're working with Post at this time to see whether or not we can continue them on with a reserve deputy program. They've completed Module Two, so we're moving forward with that to see whether or not we can continue them on, in hopes that soon they will be going back to the academy, although they don't go there. We recently hired a emergency health food service staff member, a member of our community that was placed out of work with a lot of local restaurants. I did that in anticipation should something happen with our existing general food service staff. They have two members that are in that, shall we say, danger group. They're over 65, and should one of them become injured, it would become significant detriment to our current food service staffing for the jail. So I decided to bring on an extra help at this time to include any issues should somebody become sick. Additionally, we were trying to help out, as you know, last week Governor Newsman announced a new program, stay home statewide and check in, helping out with our senior citizens to help combat social isolation and food insecurity among Californians who are over the age of 65. So the Trinity County Food Bank approached the sheriff's office and asked if we could help with preparing meals for the senior citizens who are not able to get out. So we agreed to do that, and starting yesterday, the jail kitchen staff prepared over 50 meals that the food bank picked up and started delivering to senior citizens in the county. And we have made a commitment to do that four days a week to prepare those meals and have them delivered. So we're pretty down to be about being able to do that. And other than that, we are continuing to monitor our health inside the jail. So far, so far, so good. We're not going to whittle on that, and we're continuing to monitor the health and safety of our staff as well. And that's all I have to report right now.
Any questions? Any questions from Supervisor Brown?
No.
Supervisor Finley?
No.
Well, we just really want to thank you for working so collaboratively with the food bank, and that's just so awesome. And I'm sure each and every senior that receives their food is appreciative, so thank you very much for stepping up to that plate.
Very welcome.
Mr. Rogers from probation, I'll jump in as well.
Thank you, Tim.
So we're still out there supervising the highest-risk individuals in the community. Officers have P P Ds issued to them. We have state practices in place. We're also dividing up the officers into two separate shifts, keeping them in different locations. So in the event that we do unfortunately, God forbid, have somebody have positive, it wouldn't completely decimate the workforce. Also putting enhanced screening and process for office contacts and also juvenile custody. We're also continuing with all of our group home contacts with juveniles, doing a lot more work by phone as allowable now with relaxation of HIPAA requirements and B D S requirements and different things. But as much as possible, we're still keeping a face-to-face contact and continuity with our clients. So we also have, out of the early releases from B D C R, fortunately, just one individual, an extra individual came into Trinity County. That person's being picked up tomorrow and brought back. We are trying as much as possible to ensure that any individuals that are released from C D C are, that we have confirmation that they're not positive. Unfortunately, I think with the state, it's more of a one-way street. They want to get folks out as quickly as possible, but as Sheriff Saxman will certainly know, they don't have the same consideration for holding folks for a longer period of time in local jails and not accepting them. So that's kind of been a source of frustration. We're working with the courts, dealing with the issues of the delays in the trials, delays in arraignments and other issues. That's kind of an ongoing day-by-day thing to see what the latest is and how we can do workarounds on some of the things that need to be done with our probationers. Other than that, like I said, with the decisions that we made on staffing, we're pretty confident that regardless of what happens, we'll be able to continue to operate.
Supervisor Rose?
Can I do a quick question for you?
Supervisor Morris has a quick question.
So, Tim, has the state given any direction to probation directors about when a visitor from another jail comes to our county, do they have to be quarantined as well, even though they're telling us this person's healthy? Okay.
Good question, yeah. You know, interestingly, that has not come up. You know, there's certainly a lot of different interesting twists that come into play with the 14-day quarantine with individuals coming from out of county. You know, one of my concerns was the possibility of that being weaponized by somebody that, as an example, I've got two officers that are going to be on the road here within the hour heading to, I think it's corporate prison. So when they get back, would that mean that they are on quarantine? Or is there an understanding or an exception for the fact that they are as a very essential staff? And I think that as this thing progresses, we're kind of massaging this a little bit, figuring out how exactly this works. In my situation here, I make sure that the two staff that are hitting the road are the staff that are in the same work group, so that not only are they considered essential employees and know they don't go on 14-day leave as soon as they come back in the county, but it also protects the other half of my officers that if, for some reason, they were exposed when they were out of county, or there was some concern that, you know, they could go on 14 days, but it wouldn't shut the entire operation down.
I just didn't have the state, when they're releasing prisoners, if they had any instructions that went with them?
No.
Okay.
No. It's kind of the source of frustration. We've reached out to B D C R a number of times, wondering can we give confirmation testing before it is made its release, and they're not able to do that. They can only tell us that they have no signs or symptoms of polar flu.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Brown, do you have any additional questions?
No, I don't think so.
Supervisor Finley?
No.
I hear something over here. So we...
Supervisor Morris, Tim Sachs, if I could just chime in here real quick. I was on a conference call with C S S A when C D C R was on there, and what they were telling the sheriffs is that the, for the most part, the individuals that were due to be released had already been, so they're, based on their word, they had already been quarantined for 14 to 20 days, and that's what they were saying. They had been reduced in general population prior to the release, but again, that's what they were saying.
Sure. Well, thank you. That's a little more encouraging. So as this COVID-19 continues to direct so many things, we appreciate the department heads throwing away the ball... heads throwing away the box and hopefully we'll have testing that can be done quickly and to show whether people have been contaminated or have symptoms and don't know it. And it sounds like that those are coming sooner than later and so hopefully, we appreciate you going out of your way, all of the department heads, to protect the staff and Trinity County is very fortunate to have such incredible leaders at the top of all these. So we appreciate that and safe travels to our officers. Thank you, Tim. Is there any other department heads? Okay, we're going to go ahead and go to a report from County Administrative Officer, Dr. Coons.
Thank you, Chair Chadwick. I want to start out with actually thanking the public for the cooperation we're getting at the county level and state level, federal level. Essentially, all we can do is take away people's rights right now to protect them and we are getting cooperation from the public and their understanding. So I just want to really reach out to the public and say thank you because in the end, they're the ones that are really keeping us safe. We may be making decisions, but they're the ones keeping us safe by staying home, staying off their jobs and one sacrificing. So I just want to say that we appreciate what we're doing is being implemented at the public level. With that being said, as both Tim and we're talking about, we don't have a game plan for this. Right now, everything's on the table. So we're making decisions and refusing to err on the side of caution when it comes to public safety. So I want to thank the board for allowing us to have the freedom to make those decisions because when this is all over, I'm sure some of our decisions will be questioned why we did this. But if we can point to a zero to very low infection rate in Trinity County, that will be a reason why and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to protect the public. So we're making a lot of decisions right now. Someone before the state, our public health was on this before the governor came out. So I just want to say thank you to the staff that's just spending countless hours researching and watching what's happening elsewhere so we can implement here. Our doctors, our health officer, he's been amazing and very responsive when we have some questions or need some orders put out. So as I said, everything's on the table right now. We don't have a game plan. We're learning as we go along, but we're going to make decisions as quickly as we can and implement them and hopefully we're making the right ones. I'm sorry. Want to refer a little bit back to what Supervisor Morris asked about the CBPG. When you asked about that earlier, it kind of sparked in me that this is not only a health emergency, it's also an economic emergency. So we're developing an economic task force. I'm asking Susie Colcoms to head that up and we're going to be taking members of the community, some of our financial partners, and putting together a task force, much like what they're doing in Delmar County. I spoke with Jay Serena over there, their CEO, and they started something very similar. We're going to mimic that but expand it a little more to see what we can do to get the information out to our local businesses and those that are in need and see what we can do at a county level to assist beyond just pointing to websites, the federal and the state. So I'll update the board as soon as I get more information on that. But I run throughs the people we've talked to so far have been willing to jump in and help, so we're going to start moving forward on some type of economic task force to help our local businesses. Finally, I don't know if it was mentioned, but we did do that press conference every Friday and we've had 1,500 views so far, so it's well received. Again, so I'll add the report and have to answer any questions.
Supervisor Brown, do you have any questions?
I do not, in fact.
Supervisor Finley?
No, thank you.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes, I do. Thank you, CEO Coons, for expanding that topic. It's an important topic. As I said last time, this was a forest fire recovery. We'd be talking about people getting to their homes. Today's recovery is about keeping our businesses open and surviving. So, and I do appreciate Health and Human Services, I think I saw a link on our county webpage for small businesses, if I'm not mistaken. So I know the Shasta SBDC is doing some webinars. Maybe they can come and do a presmo, but they can't come and do a presentation, but eventually they could do a presentation. So I really appreciate that. That's really, I think, crucial for this emergency. So thank you very much. Also, I do want to again repeat what you just said about the public. I've noticed how the public's really been cooperating, at least in my view shed, and of course, thank the county staff at all levels, just adjusting to their work schedule. It's all a bit of a disruption, but they're still managing to serve the public. So I just want to thank all of those involved in keeping that zero, that caseload at zero. I did have a question from, a couple of questions from members of the public. There was some notice in the paper about the library going to be open. I didn't think that was the case.
No, library is still closed.
Didn't see it personally, but there was a listing that the library was going to open in like a week or two. Does that ring any bells?
Not from, no, not from my standpoint, no.
You are the department head. Okay. I didn't think so either, but I wanted to confirm that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Gross? I want to chime in on that task force. It sounds amazing. Thank you for taking the initiative. I would like to encourage you to consider food security. We are an isolated community. We have high schools that have the availability to be producing. I know the schools are closed, but we have master gardeners in all the communities. We have a chaplain group perhaps that we could reach out to. Tonight's happens to be a full moon, a pink moon for all the gardeners. They'll know what I'm talking about. So we're very fortunate that Trinity County has the amount of farmers and gardeners. In the worst-case scenario, this COVID goes away and we have wonderful produce for our own community. So please, if you have any thoughts on that, feel free to follow up with me. And Supervisor Morris?
Yes, I do have a follow-up to your comments. Thank you, Supervisor Chadwick. I did want to also thank Jeffrey England. He's really bringing, you mentioned food, a lot more food into the county, the various sources he's tapped into. And of course, the churches are helping him out deliver food and they've been a big player in helping getting the word out and distributing food. And one question that might help deliver this food is since our transit is going on a different schedule, perhaps they could work delivering those senior meals that's being cooked at the jail. I don't know, it just might be a good effort.
Yeah, you mentioned that privately to me and I reached out to Rick, so he's looking into that.
Oh, okay. All right. So perhaps we should invite Mr. England to do a report out. He's not a department head, but I know he has had a lot of things happening even over this last weekend. So I think it would be good to brief the entire board if he had the time to do that at the next board meeting. I appreciate that.
We'll reach out soon.
Thank you. So, okay. Moving on to the reports from the members of the board as supervisors. Supervisor Brown, would you like to lead this off?
Sure. You know, I'm sitting here in my bedroom with my kids and through the unique time, I don't have any out-of-county travel to report. I've been trying to put out a weekly newsletter update with relevant information for coronavirus per county and state and national information. I haven't been receiving really any phone calls, maybe one phone call a week with a question or two. Maybe a week ago, McGuire had his town hall meeting, I think it was on Monday, last Monday or Sunday, and was able to address a question I had asked him because many constituents had, what I felt, the farther down river near the Fert Ranch to Willow Creek area, didn't seem to concern. There's a lot of conspiracy stuff being shared publicly and I was just trying to maintain this dream of getting scientific facts out there for people to understand as well as all the state orders and county orders. So I feel like that's been going well. I only have about 40 subscribers, so I'm encouraging people to share the newsletter and sign up if they can because I know there's at least about 1,200 constituents out there in District Four. Other than that, not much to report back on. I'm very impressed with the county staff and the capability to communicate and adapt so quickly under the unique circumstances. Everyone, you know, looks terrific, you never know what you're going to get into and kind of experiencing the thing firsthand, the passion and dedication that the department heads and all the county staff are displaying is really reassuring and inspirational, as I've noticed, increase in kindness and generosity. So hopefully there's some silver lining to this and Trinity County can maintain zero cases and just to make thanks to all the support staff members.
Thank you, Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Finley?
Yes, two short items. I have no out-of-county travel and I'm sorry to say that our retired planning, Mr. Ray Brooks, has been passed away over the weekend.
Supervisor Gross?
No out-of-county travel. But I do have, I know it's not our responsibility, but this is hit right during the middle of the census. In Trinity County, they're not mailing any explanations of how to fill out your census because they don't ship to PO boxes or rural route boxes. So we were on the bottom of the list of people responding in the state. The last update I saw with less than 15% of people respond. I know this is a Census Bureau issue, but is there something maybe we can do to try to explain to people that you're not going to be notified unless somebody comes to your door or they're not doing that right now? It takes literally two minutes to go fill it out. It's not a hard thing, but I don't know how we can aid in getting people to do that.
Yes, follow-up on that in a moment. So Supervisor, did that conclude?
Yes, that concluded.
Yeah, this is, I agree with Supervisor Gross, obviously. We all agree this is really important to funding on various levels and I've been looking into it. Somehow something didn't happen correctly. I do have a little flyer that I will email to you as I got over the weekend that will show you how to, although it's, as Keith pointed out, it's pretty self-explanatory, how to fill out your census. But, you know, if we were to do those sandwich boards, maybe that's another good place to remind people about, as they're walking in and out of the stores, on the census or any other mailer that we may send out. But it could really hurt us bad if our numbers are really low in terms of response, so.
So yeah, Supervisor Gross, just to be kind of saying that we could put a link on our website and-
There you go, right.
Again, everything's on the table. Maybe we could put a code red out, just please view our link or something like that because that will reach-
That's a great idea.
...a large portion of our population and then we can put the description of how to fill it out on our website. So we'll start playing with that and see what we can do.
And I know the Office of Education's been putting stuff out on social media, so maybe there's some joint partnership there, but I like your ideas. In terms of out-of-county travel, I did so by phone. On Friday, we typically would have met in person our NCRP. It would have been here in Weaverville, but given the situation, we, a couple of weeks ago, decided not to meet in person. We had a 50-person conference call, which did end up ending on the appropriate time at noon on Friday, which was amazing. But it was really important business we had to get done. We were awarded a block grant about a year ago, maybe a little less than that, from the Department of Natural Resources on some demonstration projects. Because we all know fire season is not going to ignore this pandemic and so there were projects that were important to start awarding and get on the ground. And around a million dollars was awarded to various projects who submitted their projects to, which will be coming to Trinity County to organizations. So that is it for out-of-county travel. Supervisor Brown, join me on that call as well.
Thank you for that. I would like to speak to the census. I have written appropriate representatives and in my view, the country should just postpone it, in my view. We have the lack of broadband, people are not getting out, they're staying home and I believe the whole country could just take a breather. We have our critical, essential workers that a lot of them throughout California are not going home, they're sleeping at the hospitals, the count will be off. So that's probably not what we want to hear. I know how tied in it is to our funding, but the whole nation right now, I think, could just, I think, looking down the road, this, in one way, our numbers are up because we have homes being filled, which isn't really fair, but I'm sure they're not going to fill it out for here anyway. I mean, they don't even know how and where we are. I had no IT yesterday. I called Dr. Coons and I told him, you know, you need to get ahold of me. Apparently with everybody that's at home and the school kids, so we're asking people to do something and they live in an area that they don't even have it. So I, if you feel like following up with your representatives and passing that on, I would encourage you because I think that it's going to be so skewed, not just for Trinity County. But having said that, I did not go out of county. Several conference calls, a lot of the committees have now done that. Some of them are still setting up. There was a call with David Bradley, who has been head of the CAP organization nationally for a long time with Congresswoman Beverly McCollum. There was also the Senator's Town Hall and our very own Marcy was on there, Dr. Coons was on there. It was a joint that's online for those who missed it. Keeping up with the COVID has become a full-time, the COVID seminars and conference calls, whether it be the Senator, the Congressman, or the President, is a full-time job. So a lot going on and as we continue, last night's Fire Chiefs meeting was totally canceled and hopefully that'll somehow get to a conference situation for next month if we still need to be in isolation. So I'm just going to conclude it at that. I know how important the census is. I just think that the numbers throughout our state and country and our county are going to be so off that I would like to see the federal government be as responsive to that as they are to other things, so.
What I was speaking about, Liz texted me and said she'll make sure that that link is on our website-
Which link was that?
To how to fill out the-
The census.
The census. And I like the code red idea, so we'll work with that to get that on. And we also have, I believe, Sally on the speakerphone and hopefully we can reach out to the Journal and they can assist in giving that message.
We do have them coming up this week.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item four, report from ad hoc, Schedule Lance Legislator.
Nothing to report.
I don't think there'll be for a little bit, right? Hold pretty much.
It is.
It is on hold, but I hope to have some sort of conclusion. Conclusion of this item, leaving there is from our staff.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown, was there anything? I heard something, but I wasn't sure if I heard.
No, that wasn't what I was thinking, but, yeah, like Keith said, it's not going anywhere currently right now, but we're trying to bring conclusions to this one way or another. Obviously, there's authority subject, and I think it really represents kind of the demographics of Trinity County and how they're not all on one page or anything. So hopefully, Supervisor Morris and I can, yeah, kind of give a summary and some of what we've kind of felt as the concerns and key issues, and it's something new that we haven't already talked about, but just to kind of bring it to conclusion would be desirable.
Thank you for that. So we're going to close reports and announcements to move on to county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board or staff may request that an item be aired out of order. There's only one, so we'll just leave it where it's at. Human Resources, item 4.1, approve a master memorandum of understanding with the Trinity County Deputy Sheriff's Association, establishing salaries and benefits approximately $25,833 per fiscal year 2019 and 2020, and $77,498 for fiscal year 2020-21 from the General Fund.
Thank you, this is Shelley Nelson, HR Director. We're going to be asking you to approve a two-year memorandum of understanding with Trinity County Deputy Sheriff's Association, also known as the DSA, and it would be defining certain compensation and benefits. The most recent agreement with the DSA expired on December 31st back in 2018. The county's been in negotiations with the DSA since March of 19. Over the course of several negotiating sessions, an agreement in process was made. We presented it to the board in closed session on March 19, 2020. You, the board, accepted this agreement and directed the negotiating team to create an MOU, which has been approved by the DSA and presented to you for approval. Would you like me to read through the provisional changes? They are listed on the staff report.
No, Shelley, thank you for that. It is in the backup, and the public has access. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
So, Board, any questions for Shelley?
No, I move to approve if there's one.
I know there's nobody in the public, but I'll just say, there's no one in the public, and if there's someone on the phone that's come on, okay, bringing it back.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Supervisor Morris?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye. So I'll read the closed session items. Item 5.1, Government Code, Section 54954.5, parentheses C, conference with legal counsel existing litigation, number of cases, one. Westland Water District, five, all persons interested in the matter of the contract between the United States and the Westlands Water District, Fresno County Superior Court Case Number 19CECGO3887. Enclosed session, item 5.2, Government Code, Section 54954.5, parentheses E, public employee appointment, Richard Coons, county administrative officer. And we do have a public comment?
It's not a public comment, it's a question about how, and as big as it is for county council, what do we want to do about the streaming? I can shut down the streaming, but unless I'm here, I won't be able to start it up to hear the report out. So I don't know whether that needs to be on the streaming, or whether we, I just want to make sure that I know how to, I mean, I guess I could wait around to do it, to turn it back on, but I'm not even sure what will happen at the site, so...
Margaret, do you have a preferred method? In the past, we have reported out at the beginning of the next meeting. If you're on mute, we can't hear you. Dr. Coons, I'll defer to you. Oh, there you are, Margaret. Go ahead.
How hard is it to, I mean, it usually takes a few minutes to get in the background. I would just say, the next meeting?
Defer it to the next.
I mean, in the old days, we used to report out in closed session at the beginning of the subsequent meeting, so...
Well, we do that. Here, I have it moved here.
Yeah, I think that might be the best feature, because then I could just shut it down and not have to worry about it somewhere.
I think that's great. Thank you so much.
So you won't even need to record after this meeting here, I mean, on it. So I'll just, as soon as it's done, when you get done, let me know.
Thank you. So are the supervisors prepared to go into closed session, or would there be any reason to take a five-minute break?
Probably take a break and let him...
Yeah. So if you're on the phone, we will, we'll take a break until 10:45.